That would be up to the board. I mean, certainly we feel that you need a security guard in the middle school.
We need something.
Well, we need to address here is the board. If the chief of police comes back and says you can have both and you pay for both, we want to do that. That's what we need to know.
It's just tough because he's asking us to wait another month.
But if...
Right, but we could decide next year.
Right, but if he offers two, we pay for them, we want to do that.
I say yes.
He's having a problem one, I don't know if he can handle it two.
What's the off-duty rate?
Well, you're talking about $180 a day for four hours. Say a couple hundred bucks if you have them more than afford. So you're talking $200 a day.
Per... per?
Per person.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just throwing out a number. I'm not...
I believe it's $45 a day.
It's about $45 an hour.
Obviously, we need to do something. I mean, it's ridiculous that they're not going to supply us with that. And maybe if enough parents go out there and discuss it at the next council meeting, it'll be heard better that way.
And we already reached out.
It's not a council meeting.
Quite a few times with the parents.
Oh, right.
You're talking about, I would say, to do what you guys want to do, it's about 40,000 persons.
A person?
You know, if you want, and again, they're not trained, and you're not going to get the same person. You're going to get a rotating individual, you know, that's off that day.
And that's almost the cost of funding the SRO anyways.
But I'm just saying, you're going to spend about 80 grand on two people. Now, obviously, you don't have to do it as extensive in one school than the other. You can shave it down a little bit. Rather than doing five days a week, you do three days a week. I mean, certainly, you might get one individual, and again, I know they have certain rules and regs on how they rotate, who gets these kind of jobs. It's not like you could just request one individual. Unless we hire them separately, but I doubt that because they work shifts. So it'd be very, I mean, Dan, you would know more than I do about that. I mean, I don't know because you're, you know, you might have a little bit more insight, but I don't really know. I'm not 100% sure that that would be that. You know, you're going to get the same person no matter what we try to do.
Again, I'll ask the question to the board. If the chief comes back and says you can have two, but you fund them, are we willing to do that?
I would be.
I would support funding.
I would support funding this.
Mr. Seiak?
Yes.
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 So now it can't be a funding decision, okay?
Just so that you know, it's about $100,000 to fund those two people.
Right, but your tax on the same taxpayer, whether they pay for it.
I'm just saying, it's $100,000 coming out of our appropriation. I'm not saying they're not working. I want everybody to understand what the cost of this is.
We understand that, we'll have to find them money, I understand that. But I think in lieu of what happened at the high school, we had assistant, I had a principal leaving an ambulance. We had kids from high school coming into middle school. I mean, this is an argument that conversation we probably shouldn't be having.
It's a no-brainer. But back to my original question, if we only do, if we do get one, and if we, the decision would be, would we want a security guard or an off-duty officer at the other school? I think we would need to decide that now because we'd have to hire someone if we went with a security guard.
Well, high school has three security guards, right? And the middle school?
Yeah, but they have nothing. Right, they have nothing. So would does the board prefer an off-duty officer that changes every day or a security guard? That's sort of.
It's a little bit less. If you do it that way, Phyllis, it's about maybe $10,000.
Yeah, but not from a financial perspective, but just to give you direction, if we're not going to have an answer till the next meeting, so that you know if you need to hire someone.
I would go with the police officer.
The police officer that's coming in the same ones, is that what you mean?
I mean, the police officers, I think they can handle middle school, whether they're in there once a day or once a week.
Well, yeah, but we also want these students to be able to go to those police officers, and you know, if they only see them once in a war room, then you're not going to feel comfortable with it. But it's obviously something that we need to do and make sure happens, so.
Don't the SROs participate in training, the gain resistance and the DAREs?
Yeah, we sent our security guards.
They can do the training as well as security guards.
They had it when we had that SRO grant. Now our security guards, we wouldn't send them now, but we got a grant to send them.
So we could shift one from the high school to the middle school to do some of that work?
Sure, if you wanted to, sure.
Well, if we don't have the SROs, that's part of, I mean, that's part of what they do, that's part of what we're missing, is that educational component.
Well, we could also send them out to be trained too. I mean, the training wasn't bad. It's just done at certain times. I think the training's like in August, it's during the summer.
But the DARE training's still going, remember the police department?
DARE comes from, that's not, I haven't heard anything about DARE.
Thank you for putting the time into it.
Well, I will talk to the chief now that you've given me direction. Now, you know what, let me talk to the chief, and then if things change, obviously, I'll send out an email. If I need to go out and hire somebody, then I'm going to need some more direction. Let's assume they say no, that they're not going to deploy anybody because they don't afford, like you say, it's not a money issue. It may not be a money issue, it may be a body issue. Then we have to determine what do we do. I mean, you've appropriated the money. The question is, do we go out and hire two? I'm assuming you want a police officer in that building. The problem is going to be, do you want us to go to a security firm that provides that service?
I guess if we can't.
Let's assume that they turn around and they say no. Like, for example, in the building that I live in, we have security. They're not allowed to carry guns, though. All right, they don't carry guns. I would trust the people that are my security people and goes, but that's beside the point.
I don't know if this is permissible under the union contract, but what about a shared services arrangement, maybe with South River or East Brunswick? If they, if they're not suffering from a manpower issue? Deviate issues.
Yeah, but then you go back to the same thing. Like, my original question was, does the board prefer to have a police officer? Because if it's not a manpower issue, there's no manpower issue on an off-duty. So my question goes back, would you prefer an off-duty officer versus hiring a security guard?
Can I ask you two gentlemen over there? Oh, really? I mean, what would, you know, obviously, you'd want the SRO officer, you work with the officer. I'm going to pick your brains, I'm not going to push on the spot right now, but I think they're really the experts, and Mr. Brown. So I would rather just go to them and say, let them research it, if worse come to worse, and let's do Plan B, whatever it may be. And then they could work with Mr. Scatiri, and then subsequently, we could get somebody in that they really know and want, because they know what they need. I may say, yes, this is, you know, go to Plan Security that I use, you know, down the shore, and they can, you know, but they may say we have a better solution to this. And so I got to find out. Hopefully, within the next week or so, I'll get an answer, and then I'll be, and you'll be around, so I'll be able to talk to you guys. All right? You want to add anything to this?
I think you're better off with a police officer, only because, you know, you're just the point of the kids do go to the officer and ask a lot of questions. There's a lot of balance there. If the kids feel comfortable with the same person or consistency, then they're getting what you're paying for. It's really, you don't want the escort service down to the office back, what you had to use it, but you really want that person, that personable person in there, somebody to give advice to. You find out more about the kids, their home lives, that the SROs can direct the principals and the teachers and counselors, give them a little more direction from the legal standpoint, and as well as.
But I guess, like, back to my original question, is it better to have a police officer that's a different person every day? Or a security guard that's the same person every day? Like, that's where we may have to make a decision.
Yeah, it's good, or you elevated your police officers, no doubt about it, so.
Even if it's a different person?
I'll answer your question.
Thank you.
Please, officer.
Okay, that's where I would want to.
Just saying, we didn't have to talk about this. I remember in our old school system, there were a rule that was enough, it was police officers.
Actually, it's funny, I was here when we brought the SROs in, there was a big debate about whether or not we should even bring them in. Why? Because people did not feel that we needed them, and we actually had to argue to bring them in.
How long ago was that?
That was about when Sergeant Sloan.
Now, we can't do without him.
Nice suggestion here, the agenda. Question I have, my concern is, we're one of the only districts in here, and I think in the county, that's maintained a full-day kindergarten. So have you seen any interesting increase in enrollments in kindergarten? Because I can understand how people would want to say, hey, Sable has a full-day kindergarten. Are you aware of the current enrollments?
Yes, I do. At the present time, we are 27 fewer kindergarten students than we were on the last day of school. However, this is prime time for enrollment. You'd have a better indicator, I would think, at the August meeting to know if there's any drastic increase. There are plenty of parents with appointments, but right now, enrollment is at 27 fewer than we had as of June 31st.
Good. The next thing I wanted to mention, and I'm not happy to bring it up, was our high school graduation ceremony. I've been contacted by a lot of people, and I will say, that was somewhat embarrassing at some of the things, especially when I found out that the air-conditioned adequacy in the auditorium was not up to, or should have been. And the sound of those people, the people that were in the auditorium were not able to hear what was going on. As the president of Board of Education, I take full responsibility for the actions or inactions of people within the district. And I've had this conversation with Dr. Alfano on several occasions. Myself, as the Board of Ed president, I know I have a high school graduation going, so I come home from work, I take a shower, put a suit on, and I come there, and I expect somebody to hand me a program. I sit down, and that's all I need to be concerned about. This board needs to come to grips, and I know what happened in 2008, and it's one of these questions. I know that when the decision was made to move the ceremony inside, I was 60 miles away from Sable, and I stand still in the turnpike because of the foreign rain. And it was that kind of day, we had rained some places and other places. I know we were kind of huddled together on the trail of lakes, because 2008, we started outside, and then we came back inside. So I think that definitely was in the psyche when we made the decision. And it didn't rain, and I was in that gym hoping to hear thunder and lightning, and it never happened. And then the sun was out, and I cannot believe it. I'm not faulting anybody for those decisions, the decision was made. But a while back, the folks that run the Faith Fellowship Church had offered to have the high school graduation ceremony inside. And they were part of this community, and they want an outreach to us, and I believe, if I mistake and correct me, that the cost for that facility was basically nothing or very low cost to do that. Many districts do their ceremonies away from the campus. Some, I know Full Bridge at times had gone to Trenton, I know they used to be N.C. Arts Center. We need to come to grips with ourselves here, and I think as a board, we need to give the administration tools to do the job. And I see no reason why we can't approach, and again, I had this conversation several times with Dr. Alfano, to the pastor. And I know when we say pastor, we're talking about school, everybody, oh, we get all crazy, separation of church and state. Well, I'll handle any constitutional issues. That is an awesome room, the size of the room, the big screen, it has adequate parking, you can handle much more than what we can bring here, number of students and parents. And I see no reason why we should not take that opportunity to use that facility, and that doesn't make a difference what happens with the rain. We had adequate parking, I think we owe that. The biggest thing we do in this district as far as putting on a show is the high school graduation. I don't think we met the expectations of many of the folks that day. Again, I'm not trying anybody in the bus, I'm not pointing fingers. I take the blame, I call that the price of leisure. But we need, we have this facility available to us, and I don't see why we can't use it. And I'm going to try this out with board discussion, you know, let's, you know, verbally get off the pot here, make a decision, and let's take them up on this, let's take a look at the place, and just make a decision once and for all. How fortunate, well, we're in a district that is in town. You know, some people are closer to come to the high school and has the adequate parking. So I see Mrs. Bakel has moved the microphone closer, she may want to share an opinion with us. I'm thinking, I'm getting the mic.
All right. I've seen the room at Faith Fellowship, I think it's a wonderful place for graduation.
Okay, so you agree.
And the fact that they've offered it for nothing, I think, and the problem is, and I know I'm going to tell you, we've discussed it at parent meetings, that we have talked about going to Faith Fellowship, but I'm just going to get the other side. Me personally, as a parent, I would take, I would go for it. The other issue from other parents, what I've heard and from people, is the kids prefer to graduate on their home territory, so on the football field would be nice. However, you have the issue with rain. So the problem is the middle ground, and you also have the issue with it being a religious institution, where some people are playing, you brought up, you brought up.
What is the issue? I read the Constitution, I could say, honestly, I read the Constitution. And it doesn't, you don't have the right not to be offended. This is a town that still puts the heavy disease.
I'm just wondering, some of the issues that came up at the parent meetings when we discussed.
They can close their eyes and ask to flumble the whole this tower.
Personally, I would rather go to Faith Fellowship, call it rain or shine, and go there, and that would be it. The other alternative is, because we have the phone system, if it's sunny and we call it outside, we can have it on the football field. Or we can say, if it rains, we'll move it in. I don't see a big inconvenience to people if you're going to call and make those phone calls and say, you know, a half hour, 45 minutes for graduation, okay, it's now inside, and only two tickets. You don't have to worry about tickets probably, because that place is so big. I don't really think it's an inconvenience if you tell, you make those phone calls and say, okay, it's now, we move to Faith Fellowship. It's not that much further, other schools drive very far for their graduation. So either way, I think would be okay. To me, I think it's something administration, but the one thing that I have heard is that the students would prefer to be on their home territory, so what does it mean to raise a thing?
So what you're saying, Phyllis, is you kind of want your cake and eat it.
Yes, I do.
You want to have it outside.
Well, no, me personally, I'd be okay. I'm just telling what all the parents have said.
I hear what you're saying, and I like that idea, and we did kick this around, we kicked this can around about six or seven years ago. And I remember Curtis Clark brought it up, I don't know if you guys were on the board, but Curtis brought it up and said, you know, I actually, we went down and actually toured the facility, which was incredible. I kind of like the idea of doing it the way you're saying, that you have it outside on the field, and if a backup would be, let's say, an hour before, no matter what, if we think it's going to rain, you have it at Faith Fellowship.
I mean, it was an adjustment for people to come inside and take a trip.
Phyllis, I've been here 10 years, and really, we should have only been inside twice. Unfortunately, you know, we did have cold feet on that day, there's no doubt about it. But 2008, people don't realize what we went through to try to run it in and outside. We never wanted to go through that again, and it was dangerous too. I mean, we're wheeling people off the field, I mean, it really got to the point, and I agree with you, Phyllis, with the call system, it makes it easier for us to do it, I would say, an hour before, if we were going to go to Faith Fellowship. It wouldn't have mattered, because I'm telling you, we would have called back whether it was an hour before, 15 minutes before, because we kept thinking it was going to rain.
Right, but the fact is that the call came out so late in this particular, and I had kids graduating both those years, so I got the worst of both. But the call came so late that people who had relatives in Pennsylvania who were driving out, it was too late, they were already coming through here, now they have no tickets. Even if you made that call and we moved it to Faith Fellowship, those people still wouldn't have been able to come in.
I think Faith Fellowship has about, correctly, my mom's age, about 3,000 seats.
I remember 3,000.
Plus, the kids are going to eat up about 500 instead. So you're talking 2,500, you're doing pretty well, I mean, everybody could get about five tickets.
But to some, I would support that.
And it's got surround sound, and it's got movies, and it's got the big screen.
If I'm a parent too, and I've been to three graduations here, and I don't know how many, since I've been to board, if I had a choice of sitting in 92 degrees heat on aluminum bleachers? Or sitting in an air-conditioned room with these big screens, you can see everything, hear everything, this is a no-brainer. But what we're doing is we're practicing leading. We have this facility, it's available to us, it solves all the problems that possibly could come up.
Mr. Mackenham, whatever you guys would like to do, you would make my life a lot easier.
Okay, just two in favor, Mr. Lemb, okay?
You know what, I'd like the senior survey to see where they'd like.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea too. Survey the senior class, see, are they willing to go to Faith Fellowship?
Mr. Juque?
And if they want, if they want to stay in the heat, then the parents should have.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's their call.
They're not going to want to go in the gym.
Well, I think, Phyllis, I think there's two choices. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, we have to make sure that Faith Fellowship is still available. I haven't seen or talked to that gentleman in probably six years.
I see him all the time.
And, well, then maybe you and I, if you would make, we can take another tour, you know, and I have no problem, Mr. Mackenham, when you do that for me, and make sure that we do have that facility, and then I'll go to the two gentlemen, and Mr. Brown, and Mr. Leonardo, when he comes back, and we'll serve it to the youngsters, and we could do either one or two things. If Faith Fellowship says we can do it, then you got two choices. You know, basically, we go no matter what, or we go field and then go there.
I would ask the parents.
I would ask the parents in the south.
I don't know.
What do we find out first, if it's available?
I've asked my kids now, okay.
What happens if it's not available?
Well, that's a new point. Can we, Lord Phyllis is playing, which was, inside if it's.
I like the inside and big fellowship, I'm going to the faith fellowship.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just feel it for people that are older, I mean, I had my mother-in-law back for my daughter's graduation, and she actually got sick.
And the parking and the traffic is alleviated.
You have to think of everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Seiak?
Believe it or not, I'm a Mrs. Bakel on this one. I like the, this doesn't happen often. I like the hybrid solution of having it on the field if possible, and then Faith Fellowship as the backup. There is a court case in Connecticut pending right now, I believe, before the State Supreme Court, about a high school that wants to use a religious institution, and it has been challenged because of separation of churches.
We're not going in the gray.
But you're not running a mass, you're running a congregation.
I understand that, and that's the argument, I'm just letting you know there is a court case pending.
Well, Jonathan's not here, so.
But I like the tradition of us graduating from War Memorial Field as we always have, but I agree, we need much better accommodations.
There has to be a better plan.
And you know what, if you do, so to speak, the hybrid, maybe you might use it 20% of the time.
Right.
So it's not like you're using it every single time. So you never know, you could get lucky, do 10 for 10, and never, you know, never use it.
I'll be interested when we open up for the public to hear from folks here. Mr. Barker, what do you think?
The hybrid solution sounds good to me too, like the outside if possible, and not go to Faith Fellowship.
Mr. Bruno?
I'm going there to start with, the end of June, with the heat, we have a chance of rain no matter what. So I would say just go there and avoid the conflict.
Mr. Bishaw?
As a bomber who walked on that field 43 years ago, I stick with tradition, okay? A bomber is a bomber, and you spend your last days on that field when you receive your diploma. You don't take a substitute other place. Bomber tradition, bomber history, we don't break it. Well, we have a cafeteria that can accommodate 1,000 people in here, and we have a P.A. system in here. That was something that we should have looked at before. Before, I just have one other thing to say about graduation. It bothered me the last four or five years that I've been here on board. Who allows these vendors on this property to sell ice cream?
I think they've been kicked off though, when they come in.
No, no, they weren't kicked off, because when the middle school moved up, the police actually had to make a move with the traffic. I think what we have to do is, we don't receive any gratuities or anything from these vendors, they're here just to make money at the expense of our graduation. The vendors should not be allowed on school property during the ceremony.
Okay, so you are for keeping it on the field?
Correct.
So no, the championship at all?
No.
I say the field.
I say the field, and then Faith Fellowship as a claim to...
I will approach them about that. One more item on this topic, which may help alleviate the rain issue, and I don't know if it would pose an imposition on parents, but I know of one other district, I think it might even be Woodbridge, that is back, moving up their graduation time to like 2:00 in the afternoon, because thunderstorms typically happen between 5:00 and 7:00, and there's less of a chance of rain at 2:00 in the afternoon.
We, where I came from, up in the outskirts, we're all...
I, I doubt it would overpropose hardship for parents.
There's no traffic, it's easier to get back and forth. They don't, they're usually like during the day.
But that's, I, if we're going to survey, that may be one of the other questions we want to ask. All right, we kicked this dead horse. Lastly, and as you know, the board last year, Mr. Bishada has asked me several times, the board voted 9-0 to bring a junior ROTC program to the high school. It was inspected, a colonel came from the headquarters, I called him, and he said, he was very impressed with the facilities in the district, and said he gave it its highest rating. So, what that means, September of 2011, we're going to have to make a decision about bringing that program online, if that's what we still wanted to say. He was impressed with Sayovul Warburg High School, he was impressed with the Wall of Honor, and he was impressed with the bomber nickname, and he was impressed with the fact that there was a military airplane as well, so, all that works out very well, so.
Mr. McEnam, for people that are here and also that's recorded, would you please explain to the benefit, to the students who participate in the program, and there's really no drawbacks to this program?
No, the junior ROTC program is unlike an ROTC program in a college. ROTC at the college is preparing young men and women to be commissioned second tenants in the armed forces, active duty upon graduation, most of them on scholarships. The junior ROTC program is a citizenship program, it's modeled building better citizens for America. And what it is, it's a, it's an academic program, depending on which service sponsors it, for example, we have the Air Force looking at Sayovul. So that means the curriculum will be the history of aviation, the science of flight, space exploration. Along with that, there'll be leadership, teamwork, all those types of things that made our military successful. One thing I need to emphasize, that there is absolutely no requirement for any student to enter the armed services, even after they took the program for four years. Matter of fact, that's a violation of public law, that's not the reason why the program is in the school. I was approached by several of, I was in the BFW one day, I was talking with Ed Colagi and, and those guys, and they kept asking me, when was this going to happen? And we went back to the board, there was support to do that. So it's an academic program, they would actually get academic credit for it, it is a curriculum standard in New Jersey State. And for those students that might have an interest in going in the military, it's a pathway to the military academies and those types of things. That will require two instructors to come on board, that are certified teachers, will have a minimum of master's degree, and will have served at least 20 years in the active duty component of the service that sponsors the program. So I think, you know, it's, in a town like this, that has a very active, and I've flown many times with the Civil Air Patrol here, has a very active program, and you will draw a lot of those kids. We have a lot of Civil Air Patrol kids, we have a lot of scouts is another big draw to the program. Again, it is an academic program with special emphasis on teamwork and leadership, and I think what we call an education life skill, so I think it would be a very welcome program here.
I think you should, I think you should also say some of the benefits if they do decide to go into the military as graduation from...
Yeah, if you do at least three semesters or three years in the program, if you decide to listen to service, you will be given two stripes upon completion of graduation. You know, that's certainly a benefit. So, this is a veteran-friendly town, I think that is certainly a point. So more to follow on that. Okay. Mrs. Seig, do you have anything from the New Jersey School Boards, please?
Basically, the big news is the cap issues that have been happening on various fronts, including superintendent salaries. I spoke to New Jersey School Boards today, we're still waiting for regulations or something to happen with that other than just a newspaper article. In addition, was the cap on local school budgets of 2%. There are some exceptions to the 2% of the R minimal, so that's going to pose some ongoing challenges as enrollment grows, and also issues with special education, should we get a student that has an exorbitant price tag attached to his or her education. So I'll find out more probably in the next month as this stuff is decodified, but that's basically the big talk at the state level.
Okay, Mr. DeAndrea, would you take these discussion items, they fall under...
The first is, you received a letter in your package from the auditors indicating the types of communication that have to occur during the audit process, and at the conclusion, you bring it to the board. Is the board looking for anything to transpire differently than the auditor reporting to the full board at the conclusion of the audit?
No, I'm, I'm putting... Okay. Do we have a selected order based on the two...
No, you already currently have an auditor for this year.
Okay.
They've retained to do the audit. The other one is a letter from Rugby School.
So what, what were the proposals for then? Is that for the following years?
I didn't get to the proposals yet. Yes, the proposals would be for the 10, 11 school year.
Okay, so we're starting early, got it.
Okay. The next is, the solar feasibility study, the Buildings and Grounds Committee have met, discussed the whole report in detail, every aspect of it. What the key component of it is, is that based on the solar feasibility study, we could go out with a referendum that would be at no cost to the taxpayer. We sat with our bound counsel yesterday, reviewed the numbers and figures, and basically we can go out for about 18 million, rounding numbers, roughly around $18 million worth of referendum work, which would currently include solar panels to the amount of 7,000 solar panels district-wide, plus roof replacement at almost every building that requires it. Truman, Eisenhower, Solover, Arlington, and the middle school and parts of the high school. So with that, and there is still a little money left over to possibly do another aspect of energy conservation, my recommendation would be, look at univ ventilators at the middle school or Arlett School with the remaining funds. So basically, there's an opportunity to go out with an $18 million referendum that would, would go out with no cost to the taxpayers. Now understand, you still have to bond. When they say no cost, is from the energy savings and from selling S-Rex, and basically what they are, are special selling, selling of commodities at a certain rate that get bid on, on a yearly basis or when you're selling them. And there's different methods in which you can sell them, that if the board wants to move forward with the feasibility study, with the solar referendum, I would recommend that you have Joe DiCaro from DiCaro Ravina, Lisa Gora come and fully explain all the aspects of the referendum to the board, because there are different options you can do, you don't necessarily have to bond it, you can do a bond anticipation note, you can do other methods to pay for these issuance of this bonding, other than straightforward bonding. So I guess the real discussion, and I turn it over to the committee member who sat and heard it, is there a desire from the board to move forward? And if there is, the committee heard very strongly from Mr. Ravina, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. DiCaro, that postponing the referendum vote from a December to an April, which was done at the budget process, will cost the board a full year of energy conservation, because that four-month timeline pushes the referendum project, because you have to keep in mind, we're doing roof replacements. April referendum does not give you enough time to get roofs on in summer of 2011. You're now postponing the project to summer of 2012. A December referendum will enable you to start putting new roofs this summer, the summer of 2011, and thereafter followed by solar panels, which can be installed during the cold weather time. So you lose a year by postponing four months. So I guess I turn it over to Mr. Bishada at the chair, at that point, to add anything else.
I would recommend this project, I'll be very honest with you, because first of all, it's going to improve our buildings in this district, and as parents, if you have had children in the district, throughout various schools in the district, you can see that our maintenance and building upgrades of our maintenance period has fallen down by the wayside over the years, but we are on a comeback trail, that's what I want to say. We're, we're looking forward to making the progress to make our buildings that we don't have to keep on sinking millions of dollars into each year. With this solar, as Mr. DeAndrea was saying, they're called solar renewable energy credits. There's an article that appeared in the Home News Tribune, July 11th, where Woodbridge is going for solar, except one thing. Woodbridge is, they're going to own it after 15 years, we're going to own it, period. The way the contracts will be set up is that we have a maintenance agreement, repair work will all be included in this contract. And again, it's a beneficial area that we will actually have money coming back into the district through this plan, that we can rejuvenate our buildings. As he had mentioned, Arlett, auto ventilator, univ ventilators, Truman, windows univ ventilators. All of our older schools are in drastic, the middle school as an example, you're going from, your students will be going from the UES, you know, which is, I would say, a 21st century building, to our middle school right now, which is in need of a lot of work, a lot of work. The classrooms, the roofs, remodeling, et cetera. And then they come to the high school, which is another 21st century building. Through this project, we should able to set money aside each year that we can renovate in our middle school, in Arlett, in Truman, in Eisenhower, all the districts. It's a win-win situation. And the thing that I want to emphasize, the main thing is...
I have a question. Are they offering rebates at all? I know at one point, a lot of...
No, the rebates, Woodbridge qualified for the rebates because it went out in 2008. But Woodbridge is giving the rebates to the contractor that's going to install the solar panels. There is a possibility of having funding from the state. There is a possibility. We have to go further and look into this situation. The way that our administration in Trenton has been working, we don't know from day to day, from week to week, what monies will be coming back to the, any district or to the municipalities.
We're still a few weeks away from finding out exactly what the state is going to do as far as how much of the debt service they're going to fund. They were funding 40% last year, that's definitely going to go down, they're anticipating it to be at 34% probably, but we really won't know that in another three, four weeks. That's...
Question. The S-Rex, when you go out to the voters and ask for the 18 million, I know it's no increase to the taxpayer, so when you explain it to them, suppose the S-Rex, are they guaranteed income? They're not, so...
They have to sell on the open market.
Right, so if it, if there was a problem with the S-Rex, even though it's no cost to the taxpayer, they still have to authorize that there could be an issuance? Like you're definitely issuing those 18 million in bonds, is that correct?
We have to issue 18 million in bonds. And yes, that is, the one thing you have to be conscious of is that if the S-Rex don't sell at the dollar value that you're anticipating, then it could be a cost to the taxpayer.
Okay, now suppose the, on the other side, if the S-Rex sell higher than the anticipation that's in this proposal, what happens if it's over? Where, where does that go?
We discussed that yesterday, and that's where there's, there are different options available to the board that you can explore. Mr. Bishada indicated one of those, is that if you generate more money than you anticipated for that given year, you can take the money from debt service, transfer it out of debt service, over to operating, accrue it in operating fund, and at the end of the year, in June, as we just did the last meeting, you then transfer that money into a capital reserve for future capital project. And our bound attorney is looking into the possibility, can that money then also be transferred and earmarked for only a specific purpose, so that add a budget defeat process? That money cannot be taken away from you because it's been earmarked for only a special purpose. We're looking into if the resolution will be written that way. So you could do it that way. You can work it out where you look at a bond anticipation note, and you go out on a yearly basis, only take out a note for the amount of money that you, you need to complete your project. Based on the selling of your S-Rex, if you generate, whatever money you generate that year in your S-Rex selling, the following year, you pay down that amount of principal, and the following year, your bond anticipation note is reduced by the amount of money that you put towards your principal. So now you're doing another year. So there are different avenues you can look at. So you could do it in that manner, instead of having a fixed bond that would, that you pay a certain amount every year at a fixed price. You can have callable bonds, where you can make your bonds callable, so that if you have excess funds, you can call a bond in and not wait for its maturity. So those are all things the board and board can look into and assess as to which is the best avenue that you wish to go in.
But for sake of example, if you went, but say, just for example, the bond anticipation note, would the referendum still read 18 million in bonds?
Yeah, they always have to read for the dollar amount of the improvements that you're doing.
And if the S-Rex come in more, can that money be returned to the taxpayer, if you choose?
Absolutely, that's, that's the discretion of the board, yeah.
And Mr. DiCaro's estimates, as far as the S-Rex, the sale of the S-Rex was very conservative. The likelihood is very good that...
Yeah, they, they said yesterday, S-Rex are currently selling for, I believe someone said 640, $650, and he's only estimating selling at 480. He's using a very conservative number, and the reason is, is he doesn't want to use such a high number, and then in the future, the numbers start coming down.
He has a good track record, will everybody go solar again.
Right.
You better jump high somewhere, Mr. McEnam?
Yes. Let me, let me just clarify, again, with this solar renewable energy credits, these are, companies such as Jersey Central, Public Service Electric and Gas, they have facilities that don't meet the standards for green energy, as it's called today. And what they do, instead of them going out and billing facilities, what they do, that's why they have these solar renewable energy credits. It could be a company in Ohio that could buy these. We have the credits, they purchase them at a fair market value, or above fair market value. That's what it's all about, that's what these are, where they purchase credits for the, where they can't meet the green energy that they're supposed to.
If you name it in terms, you're, you're selling the excess energy you're generating, and I mean, that's the bottom line.
You're, you're not selling the energy, no, I, I have to correct you on that. What you're doing is, you're supplementing your own energy supply, reducing it, and when the buildings aren't in operation, such as the summertime or during the winter recess, instead of the meter going forward, the meter goes in reverse. So when you start up again, you have like, like a credit.
Thank you. Okay, got you.
I have a question.
It is a complicated process to understand the market and how it's sold.
Good luck getting it passed.
Yeah, that's my question. So it was, I think, $40,000 or $60,000 that we had on the budget for this referendum? Is that, we would be paying that still?
If the referendum passes, it comes out of the referendum. You'll, you would only have to pay for the referen, the referendum cost if it fails. If it passes, it's all part of the referendum.
Okay. But, DiCaro is going to come here and go over this before we decide, correct?
Well, if the board, if the majority of the boards are saying, yes, this is something we want to move forward with, then what we would have to do is bring Mr. DiCaro back into...
That's what we need, full of, full of...
I would recommend, I would recommend, again, with recommendations of bringing him in, with a presentation to the full board in an open session, that way the public can be here to see exactly what's going on and have a comment.
And I would all follow by Mrs. Gora.
Well, he did, when he, when he came in, he did do it, the first time.
Yeah, the first.
Yeah, okay. And the rest.
Well, what are, what are we doing?
I think the consensus is...
Do you want to bring him in on the 17th meeting?
The boss.
17th, well, that's the thing, you just bring him for the special, not a special meeting.
Right. Make him the presentation.
Energy efficient consultant, again, the Buildings and Grounds Committee sat, met with the gentleman yesterday, and I believe, the committee is not looking, not making the recommendation for this full board to move ahead. They believe that we can work within the district with our current administration They believe that we can work within the district with our current administration and staff to do somewhat what the program would offer us, and we just have to start educating our staff and our students to be energy conscious.
I agree.
The Rugby School, Rugby School is a special education program. They're requesting of the board to either support their endeavor not to participate in the National School Lunch. I apologize, it's been on my desk, it got buried in paperwork, the person called me, and I basically am bringing it to the board as to, do you want to support them or not in participating in the National School Lunch?
Does it impact us?
What does this mean? I emailed you a question, you answered me, and I still don't know what it means.
The way I understand it is they just want to run the program the way it's currently run, offer the students a meal at the cost that's in there, and not make them participate in the National School Lunch. What it means to us...
So what do we have to do?
Well, currently, the National School Lunch program is requesting that they get approval from any district that sends them as to if they're going to allow them or not participate.
Are they charging their students for lunch?
No, currently they're not.
So we send kids to the school? Is that where you pay them?
And what we pay in tuition, they should be paid.
And they're still going to get the same nutritious meal? There's no...
Yes, they did, as the second day, for the 2010 school year, the Rugby School at Woodfield has outvoted not to charge, not to charge families of its students for meals, and they do not have to participate in the free or reduced lunch program.
Does that mean any concerns?
Excuse me? That's what I was just asking.
Would you recommend?
Do you have any concerns?
No, I have none. And we only have one child there who's coming back in September, so it's kind of like a moot point. And he's coming back.
All right, so history time, this press. Okay.
I have one, Ms. Sullivan has a Denmark exchange student question for you, ladies and gentlemen.
I have been contacted by American Field Services. It's a nonprofit organization that places foreign exchange students in public schools. There is a family in Cerebral that is willing and would like to accept a high school student, a 10th grade girl from Denmark for the coming school year. She is an excellent student. She speaks English very well. She's a superior athlete and is very good at the high junk, by the way.
That's what I said.
They are requesting permission to place her in the school. If they do, we will accept her as a Cerebral resident for the year. There is no tuition. We would not be accepting any tuition money because she is a Cerebral resident for the year and will be entitled to a free public education. But because it is an exchange due, we need board approval.
Sure.
I need a recommendation.
Anybody have any issue? Can we send the board member to Denmark and exchange?
I already asked, I wanted to go. Thank you, I'll notify.
If that's it, I'd like to...
No, you have one other. You have your auditor issue.
Oh. Okay, what's your vote, Mac, first? Did you have a question we discussed today?
No, I have a question on the format of the agenda and the switching from page to page, and I'm having a lot of trouble myself following it. I can understand why the public isn't. So I don't know how we got to this, but the two agendas are too complicated for me.
You guys decided to do that the direction of the side.
We directed it because, if you recall, we used to get a different whole agenda, and then that confused you, and then we went to this.
I, it wasn't confusing to me. We used to have it where it was bold.
I know, you guys...
You didn't want that.
You didn't want that.
No, I think the problem with the board was that it kept changing. Not that it had to be on separate paper. Like, having this back and forth is...
I'll do whichever way you want to do it. I don't care if it's bold, black and white, green, yellow, whatever you want.
I'm just getting an email, but...
My preference would be that it didn't change from Friday to Tuesday. That would be my preference. So, but if it had to change, I would prefer the way it was.
I mean, what we used to do is we used to bold it, and then we put it right in the text, so you would understand what it was, but for some reason, some people were saying they were getting confused.
Right, because if it was on my old page 14, now it becomes 15.
Right.
And the A becomes T.
But now the addendum, in fact, it does make it...
Would it be helpful if we just voted on the addendum separately at the end? Voted on the original agenda that you sent home and then...
Whatever, whatever.
It's harder to follow, I understand. And I think that Mrs. Kellman's problem maybe today was more that there were a few things that were not...
Right, we had five or six.
There wasn't that much this time, but I'm really talking about the last meeting.
Right, it was huge.
The last meeting was horrible, so...
Well, what we'll try to do is, we're really trying to limit the amount of things that go on the addendum, but it's virtually impossible because a lot of it is kid oriented, it's child oriented. And just more towards a personnel issue that we have to hire a teacher. I'll do whichever way you want. I mean, to me, bolding it was easier, to be honest with you.
Mac, why don't you come up with the process that you would like?
Okay, I'll think about it.
All right, you'll think about it. We'll leave it the way that it is.
I just wanted to chime in on this. One of the issues that we had, if you remember, was use of paper. We were using tons and tons of paper with two copies.
You're right.
And this year, I was the one that pushed, I'll be very honest with you.
Okay, I knew it wasn't...
No, no, I didn't say it was you, I said it was a board issue.
Okay, I don't...
But let me just say, you did bring up a good point. What I would like to do, and again, I was going to throw this out since you brought it up, some boards are better going paperless. They're just putting it on the agenda, on the screen, and if somebody wants to get it, obviously you would have copies of it, but the public, we'd only put out maybe 10 copies or whatever, because it is unbelievably non-green issue. We go through, you can't imagine, we killed at least five trees in there.
I'm co-receiving the agenda and everything that comes from your office via electronic.
You know, I mean, we could start scanning stuff in at the same time. We could put the agenda on, you know, we could have Sandy put it on the screen, and certainly we could do it that way, and then if the public wants a copy of it, they could go online and get it.
Or they can even contact the board office if they don't have access to a computer and pick up a copy, no?
Sure, yeah. Well, we don't have copies here. I mean, I wouldn't have no copies here. But rather than make, sometimes you make 50 copies, three people show up. I mean, so that's another issue. We wind up with a ton of them left over. I would really like to do that. If, maybe I'll send it out to the board and you guys can give your opinion, but I think it's the, I think it's the way to go, guys. I mean, I'm spending, and we'll make it a lot cleaner because I'm, I'm, we'll make it a lot cleaner because now, fellows, when you do, if you are confused, you're seeing it on the screen. And I would just get up and that's where everybody would see it, and if somebody had to take notes, they would just take notes.
You would call the tax...
I'd give a call, yes.
Anybody have anything to add about getting everything to be an email? Mrs. Esposito?
I'm fine.
Mr. Syam?
Yes, email.
Well, you know I want paper.
We don't.
Our email's paper.
Ms. Trap?
I want email.
Mr. Bishada, I'm fine with it.
Email?
You brought up, Mr. Bishada.
I know, I, hey, make it so. I burned fire with it.
All right, so what you're saying is, is try to, I think no matter what, Emilio's still going to have to, Emilio's still going to have to send some stuff home because we can't scan everything. So you're saying the Friday packets are electronic?
Yes.
Okay.
Why can't we scan everything? Why wouldn't we scan?
It comes electronically.
Well, some things, it's just too bulky to scan.
We don't have to scan? We don't have digital documents? Where's Sandy? We don't have document centers?
The talent will... Are you on email? You guys?
I love those Sandy of copies, I'm excited.
Well, most of it we'll try electronically and we'll work on it. And then next board meeting, we'll check this electronically, Miss Sandy, so that we have a screen up and we won't have 900 copies of the board report.
And every board member, they bring their own agenda.
Except me.
Except me.
Which you'll pick up anyway.
Right.
Which I pick up anyway, so I'll pick it up, as I do now.
Thank you very much.
But I think...
What was the sense of sending it electronically and printing it out? If I have electronically, you can put electronically, I got to hear it.
Well, that's another thing. You can take notes and it'll be up here electronically.
It's 2010, guys.
But if you're going to do that, I think you need to put the agenda on the website before the meeting.
Buy notebooks for all the...
That means like the day of the meeting.
And this press on, guys. Anything else before I open the pocket?
Yes.
Auditors.
I need direction to the...
I thought the old place was coming today.
We were interviewing, then I'm told we're not interviewing. As we speak right now, I don't have a current auditor for the 2010-11 school year, although there's, the auditors at the end of the year, there are times that we reach out to them during the year for advice and information. And I can tell you, if you're looking to move ahead with the December referendum, you do need your auditors to do official statements.
Let me open something up. We have two of them, one of whom we already have. This is the one we don't have. Okay, so starting down at that end?
Well...
You want green or red?
One has price and the other one doesn't unless I missed it?
$35,000 for the one that doesn't.
Okay. What's the one that doesn't?
I was more impressed with one.
Twenty-five, I think. Twenty-five? I think it's one...
Well, can, I'm sorry, can I still get an answer? Because Emilio has a preference.
Actually, I'm not going to give you an answer because I worked with one of the two firms. I've worked on it in my career.
Worked with one company, did he say?
I worked with one of the two at one point in my career.
Oh, as an employee, you mean?
Yes.
My opinion is, I initiated this because I like to get this order. He's been ordering our books a while. I think it's good. Every so often have a new set of eyes looking at the books, a new auditing firm. Granted, the disordering firm, if you read the proposals, doesn't have as extensive experience with school districts. Okay, but the school district does have a pretty huge school district, so. I would suggest that we go with this new guy, and if it doesn't work out, we can certainly change this again.
What, in a year?
Why not?
No, we...
A year, we phone auditors every year.
And it would save $10,000. I vote for Sam Klein as well.
I'll have the resolution written for the next one.
Is that everybody's...
That's fine, sounds good.
Okay, this is great. This is great.
I could get one if it's good or not.
Yeah, I got one, I got that one. That's good enough for me. Okay, is anything else?
Yes. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Alfano on the administrative conference that was held last week. Mr. Syak and I were in attendance. It was incredibly well-run. We had people from all over the state. There was at least one person that traveled over 100 miles to attend. I know I sat in on three of the workshops, and they were, I was very impressed. There was an impressive variety of topics that I couldn't decide which ones to go to, so I split the difference between two of them halfway through. And congratulations, it was wonderful, it was a great experience. I wish I could have attended both days.
Is this the one where the Secretary of Education showed up?
Christian Schelmer was in attendance.
Thank you. Very good, thank you for that. Anything else before I open the pocket?
Yeah, I'm actually going to echo Mrs. Berna Cuia's comments as well. I was also there, an outstanding conference, probably one of the best that I've seen in the state. It's actually better than the superintendent's conference that's held in Atlantic City. They had the conference last year with 150 participants across the state. This year we were up to 320. It didn't cost the district anything. The administrators brought their own breakfast, and the New Jersey Department of Education supplied lunch. They made money.
They made about $2,000 on serving lunch. I made, Emilio and I made most of the lunches.
The other part that I took away from it, I, one of these sessions that I attended was the one that was run by Mr. Agalase, Dr. Alfano, and Mrs. Brady, and it was talking about collaboration as part of the administrative team. And they referenced a lot of Jim Collins' book, From Good to Great, about working to get the right people on the bus, and there were several references made to Mr. Jagu and Mr. Curry as new vice principals in the district who were both there. And there was a young lady who was an administrator sitting at the far back of the room, and I have no idea who she was or where she was from, but she made a comment that it's not only about getting the right people on the bus, but it's also about getting the right people on the bus in the right seats. And what she saw from Dr. Alfano and from the administrators that we had present from the Cerebral team is that Cerebral really has a knack for doing that. And when you look at the promotional decisions that we made tonight with Mr. Curry and Mr. Jagu, 10 years ago, we weren't in a position to be able to do that. When you look at the principles that we have now, Mr. Byrne, Mr. Agalase, Mr. Brown, Ms. Jakubic, even Dr. Alfano, they all have one thing in common. They were all hired at relatively the same time, and they all came from out of district because we didn't have anyone mentored and prepared in district ready to take on those leadership responsibilities. We just advertised for two vice principals, and we got seven candidates, many of whom were qualified, and we chose the best two out of the seven candidates. So it really shows the continuum that we've gone through in the last 10 years in terms of working with our staff, developing a culture, and really presenting a leadership team here in Cerebral. And as future vacancies open up, we're going to be able to continue to do that. So again, good job.
I'd like to also add that one of the key speakers was a superintendent from North Brunswick, and they pride themselves on the way they have saved the district money with the number of shared services that they have. And at the time that he was giving his, his direction to us, I happened to be sitting with Mr. DeAndrea, and the next item comes up on the screen, and I look at Emilio, and we do that. And the next one comes up on the screen, yeah, we do that. For over 15 items. So here we are in the state conference, and a very articulate superintendent got up, and he was going to share all these wonderful ways in which districts was, were going to share, save money through shared services, and our superintendent and business administrator are already doing those things. It was good.
Okay. Anything else I'd open up for public? Anything? I'd open up for public. Anything may come forward board. Again, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone for public I'd like to come up?
Allison Hornbeck, I'm here from Dry. It's just really continuation of last meeting. Hello, everyone. One of the things I just want to get, I received a couple of emails back and forth to Mr. DeAndrea. Thank you for answering. The problem I had is that I didn't really get a response that I had wanted, so I guess I'm left with walking individual elementary schools, we're talking about capacity within the elementary schools. So the direction that I received was that the, the information is not available anywhere in ratings, so what it is, is that each classroom has it posted with the capacity. So I guess then I'm left to walk in buildings and writing down capacity of classrooms to see, you know, where each school is.
Do you want the capacity of entire building or just individual classrooms?
Both. That's what originally I had asked about.
Mrs. Hornbeck, can I just answer your question? Because I know you go back and forth, and I didn't want to get into that emailing.
Yeah, I understand.
Because I figured you were going to, you were going to be here, so I figured I might as well talk to you face to face. The classrooms understand the regulation, okay, the law is 20 square feet per child, includes their desk, their surroundings. Every one of our classrooms are between, I would say, an Eisenhower, don't quote me, about 750 to 900 square feet. So every classroom predominantly is within code. It's what you put into those classrooms that reduce the amount of space in those classrooms. Special education, Carolyn Owens, right, and Stuffy, that the square footage goes up, you know, goes to 25, 30, depending on the disability of the child. That's one of the reasons why Mr. DeAndrea was saying that the capacity is, it's like gel. Throw it against the wall, you're not really going to get it because some teachers have tons of stuff in their room, and some people have very little. Subsequently, that would alter. So we just went through a monitoring. We passed monitoring. We passed New Jersey Q-SAT. The facility director, the facility person came in, that in classroom, the biggest thing they were looking at is how much stuff did we have in the room? How much stuff was on top of cabinets? You know, did we have electrical wires and things of that nature? So, even for you to go in and look at capacities, you'd be, you'd be, you'd be wasting your time. The second thing that you'd have to also consider is, is, let's assume we had three open classrooms in every single building. And I decided, three times 15, I'm gonna fill those three schools. The capacity, the, the per pupil student ratio is only gonna go down by 83 kids per class.
Well, but that means a lot, it's just your child.
But, I understand what you're saying, but you were talking about a class, I think it was the third grade, Mr. Skoronsky was concerned because his numbers went so high, I think they were like 28 to 30, I'm not sure.
I think it's about 570.
Well, whatever, whatever it was, it was one grade level that he was very high in. He came to me and we added another teacher. So that, 25, whatever it is, it dropped to 25 or 24, I'm not exactly sure what it dropped to, but I know he asked, and I said, no, that's too high, we're gonna drop it. The other thing is, is obviously money. Okay? Even if we had 15, 15 times, you know, do the math, you're talking about $750,000. We don't have $750,000 to put in. Unfortunately, I'm not, I hate banging this drum, but even if we had facility room, we can't fill the slots. We don't have the money, right now.
Then, you know, so then my second point is, you know, has the board or has the administration tried to-
Good question. Alright, here, here's the other thing that we're looking at now. We are looking at, we have a proposal sooner or later that we're going to try to do to alleviate or ease some of the overcrowding in the elementary schools. I can't comment on it now because I haven't even given it to the board. It's in our-
So that's maybe the next couple of-
It's gonna be next September.
So maybe in September, we can ask a question again?
Well, you can ask a question anytime you want. You could ask me anytime you want. You can go on a tour with me. I can, I can show you square footages, I can sit with you with Mr. Skoronsky. What we'd like to do is, yes, the elementary schools are getting a little bit bloated now, and we realize that. The question is, there's just two problems. Getting kids so that we can open up, and we have a, a nice plan, Ms. Duffy and I have been kicking around something, that we, we still have not gone before the board, but we're looking at overcrowding, we're concerned about the elementary, and at the same time, we don't want to-
What?
Overburden the taxpayer by asking for another million dollars. We can't work, you know, extending, let's say Eisenhower's school and putting pods on the back and spending another million dollars on that. So we have to be very economical in regard to that. So we're really taking a look at that. And to be honest with you, you'll probably hear in the next, maybe a couple of months because we really need to, we're really looking at that. We're looking at it very closely. And we also have to take into consideration about redistricting. I, I really don't wanna overturn the Alvin card because a lot of parents get upset when I say, your little child that's in Eisenhower is now gonna go across town to Hall.
But, but if it would benefit my child by having less in the classroom, as a parent, I wanna do what's best for my child.
But, again, that's maybe your view, but I will guarantee you, I'll have 300 people in here saying they don't want their little child-
Well, I don't see three, I mean, unfortunately, I have 300 people now.
You're right, you're right. Right. But, but right now, right now, the overcrowding condition has really been eased by the implementation and the creation of the UES. We didn't have the UES, you think you're overcrowded now, remember, you'd have probably another 150 kids, 125 kids in your building, because you'd still have the fourth grade.
And, and, and I mean, and I understand that, but, you know, the, I don't understand, like, does the board understand how many students every year you're anticipating? You know, my daughter started kindergarten two years ago, the class, the, you know, according to the PTO, we had maybe 490 finish the school year. Last year, we finished at like 520. Now we're going up to 570 for September. I only see it going like this, and I've only been in the school, you know, my daughter's only going second grade and my, my son's in first, I only see it going-
Eisenhower is probably the, that school that's the most volatile right now. They're growing up.
At the elementary.
And we're concerned, that, that school we're concerned about the most. But if we do this plan and, 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 and we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, again, I haven't really discussed with the board and I'm still kicking around trying to reduce what you're talking about, but still, we have to factor in, no matter how we wanna look at this. Next year's budget, if it's any indication of what we went through this year, it's not gonna matter. We're gonna have open space and not be able to fill it because we're not gonna be able to afford it. And if the budget fails, it's a double whammy. And in all due respect, in the last, I've been here 10 years, I think we've passed two budgets.
Correct.
Okay, so, do the math. On average, we lost about $8 million in those 10 years, just by a million a year. In some years, we, they took more and some, they took less, and that's a residual effect. It's not $8 million in one year. It's 5 million, 4 million, you know, it just keeps escalating, and eventually, it's, it's starting to catch up with us now. And you were frustrated too. I would love to hire more, but I, I need to also give you some more facts. In the eight years that I've been the assistant superintendent and the superintendent, I have hired another 50 teachers, a lot of which are special education. So our, our, I would say we do about four a year, and that's being conservative, maybe five. And most of them, a lot of them are special education, some of them are regular ed, and a, and some in elementary.
So do you see that maybe is special ed population for some reason?
Special education population, thanks to Carol Duffy, has done a very good job, where she's really slowed that down, where the hiring of teachers, because we brought a lot of people back too, we brought a lot of children back, and that's eaten up a lot of classrooms. Remember Eisenhower and all its school, we brought, we brought back a lot of special needs students back into the district, which has eaten up a lot of space and has also eaten up some teachers.
But don't you get money back for that?
We do, we do, yes, and that's why we do it. We get the extraordinary aid back. But, it's not, it's not immediate, if you know what I mean. You gotta apply for it and you're always two, three years behind, and it's about 40,000 a child.
Over 40,000.
Over 40,000 a child, that's what you get back. So it's really not a windfall. But it's the right thing to do, we're bringing our children back.
Maybe a windfall, two or three years.
True, yes. But we've brought back a lot of children. We've, we've expanded the preschool program. You know, we have a, a, since I've been here, the preschool program's probably gone from, what, 25 children all the way up to, what, 90 now? 95?
Yeah, and, um, and we don't send any preschoolers out of district. All preschoolers are in district. We're bringing more students back to district and, you know, that's the trend.
But is preschool something that's paid, like the parents have to pay for preschool?
No, no.
Not preschool, anybody.
Right.
This is our preschool handicap program.
Oh, okay.
But, right, and, you know, these are state mandated, the, the children are only classified when they meet certain criteria and fall through, um, very strict parameters. So, it's that there are no preschoolers out of district. We've created a lot of programs, as Dr. Alfano said. Um, the threshold is, um, actually, I think it's a little higher than 40,000 now. So the extraordinary aid that we recruit is not incredibly high for those classrooms, but yet, um, that's the trend. We save a lot of money by having them in-house, but it takes up class space and it, it requires us buying, hiring more teachers and parent professionals. Might, might I give you a suggestion? All the people at this table would love to reduce class size. We always, I, you asked Dr. Alfano, how many new teachers did he, did he want originally in his original budget for the district? I, I, it's what we needed, and it, it was cut down maybe to 1/20 of what he originally requested. All of these people are in favor of what you want. What you need to do is go to your PTO meeting or go to other PTO meetings-
Well, and we have.
And explain the importance of that to those parents, because it's parents' votes that will pass budgets, that will give us the funding we need for teachers and classrooms.
Absolutely. But then, you know, like I said at our last meeting, you know, if you guys can come out to our meetings and explain this maybe when we have our back to school night, you know, make it apparently aware at the beginning of the school year, not just in April, because, you know, it comes around time for voting, it's April. People, you know, if you put that bug in there all year long, it's different than just coming up to April and say, okay, now you have to vote in the next two weeks. You know, I, I feel like-
We've never, we've never refused a request from a PTO to come and speak and would be happy to. So just contact your PTO president, and if, if they request that they would like someone to speak about-
But I'm even saying just proactively, you know, as a board, you know, you guys wanna get this passed to really put, you know, to get out there, you know, fortunately, you have to put yourselves out there.
We appreciate, if everybody was as diligent as you are and concerned, we'd be passing, we'd be 10 for 10, in all due respect. And think about what that means. I think this year, to be honest, we, this was the lowest new staff that we put in the budget, and I believe we had about eight people in there, eight new staff. Every single one was cut, except for two new preschool handicap teachers. And then we also had to let two or three go out of attrition based on the fact of, you know, obviously, the budget didn't pass. So we actually lost 10, 12 people this year, bodies, that we would've had more of if we, we, and, and I'm telling you, I hate to tell you this, I don't see this getting better next year. If our state aid gets cut again next year and we get crushed, Mrs. Hornbeck, I, I, I can't tell you what's gonna happen. I, I think it's only gonna get worse.
Well, so, so, you know, so what's planned for it now?
Well, we are, I mean, that's basically what we're doing.
This is good discussion, the extraordinary aid, by the way, that we got reimbursed in the state this year, the council took. Whatever we do, the reality is hundreds of units that will be built in Lumiere, hundreds of units that will go up in Town Lake, and then 2,000, that's 2,000 units that go up with National Ed Sciencings. That's the reality. Those are the things that make boardrooms shake their heads and say, correct. You know, it's, you know, people need to understand. Now, class size, you know, I would agree with you 100%, there's a direct correlation between what a student learns and retains is related to class size. I mean, any study of educational attainment. Hey, but the reality is, every time you turn around, you know, there's more homes and those kids are gonna build their own schools.
So what's, what's the mayor and the town council saying?
Mayor and town council are gonna tell you that we need rateables in those, uh, areas that's owned residential, they're, they're privately owned and, except for the National Ed Sciencings, that's a story, but Town Lake and Lumiere, that's, you know, we've, we've lost-
They're not gonna prove it.
Yeah, well, yeah, you can't stop, that's the problem.
Well, we're not gonna give up. And certainly, um, I will talk to Mr. Skoronsky, and I have no problem going to your, um, September PTO, probably definitely go to the October one because I know a lot, you do a lot, a lot in the first one, and, and it's so busy in September for everybody. But I have no problem coming in, and I did speak to Mr. Skoronsky, and I can say Eisenhower hit the hardest because of Lumiere.
It was across the room.
I mean, to go from maybe 90 to 570 in two years.
There's no doubt, there's no doubt. And we're, we're really trying, we really are. And, and I hope to God next year that the budget passes and we don't get havoc in the state aid. And if that's the case, then you'll see, more, you'll see more teachers.
Right. So then, when, you know, so then another part, you'll think about when you get the solar power and when that passes and you earmark that money, you make it forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Who knows? Eisenhower's got the most property. We could build a skyscraper back there.
Okay.
Maybe a football field.
Okay, so, um, alright, so we will be back in this meeting and we'll certainly put out, and I believe it is, um, Mr. Lindo who's now going to be our board, um-
Liaison?
Yeah.
Could get him.
But, yeah, just to keep, I just wanna keep hearing what, you know, what, what are the plans and, you know?
I'm sure Mr. Skoronsky will, you can, Mr. Skoronsky will get an earful about what's going on and he can certainly pass that on to you. Because it's, it's, you know, if we decide that we're going to do something to try to alleviate the overcrowding in the elementary schools, he, certainly he'll be discussing it with your PTO and with your parents, and one of us probably will be there.
Great, and, you know, to bring, to bring up the, uh, the thought of, of the school budget at the beginning of the year, instead of waiting, you know, that whole-
We bring it up in October and November, at our, our PIG meetings and at PTO meetings, we, we, we do bring it up. We start, with my administrative team and the parents, we start it early as October and November, because the, the process is so long.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you know, we know that a lot of people, unfortunately, don't come to the board meetings and don't come to the PIG, so maybe there's another way of, of getting in touch with these, these parents, you know, that, that we need to look at, because it's important. When you bring it up at the meetings, everybody gets riled up and they're all for it, and it kind of fizzles out, so you, you, you need to, you know, put that bug in the rear, I think, and then just follow through the rest of the year.
I, I have a, a couple of comments. There were, um, a few times that we had reached out to, to PTOs and they said, well, it's really not a good month right now, and so, they, they don't necessarily love when we come out there and they don't really wanna hear. I mean, they wanna hear it, but not right now, you know? So-
But obviously, the whole purpose of a PTO, you know, I get the, all the good things, the feel-good things, it's really the education of our students.
It is.
And I love your passion, and I wish that there were five, you know, 500 other parents with that passion.
And you're not proud of me though.
And, and lastly, I don't know if I, I don't, you may have seen you at a PIG meeting, but please come to the PIG meetings, they're very, they're very informative, and we welcome, we welcome all of them.
Yeah, we do, we do a lot of PIG meetings. Call around, some of them.
Okay, definitely. So, Tamara, when is the first PIG meeting?
It'll be on your out-school bulletin when you get it.
It's on the website, too.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be here.
Alright, hold on.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.